It's just a couple of minutes past 10:00 and we announce this event to start at 10:00 a.m. My name is Ronnie Metzger. I am the chairman of the Johnson County Republican Party. And we're happy to welcome all of you here to our headquarters. And Jim, and his wonderful wife Merrill, asked me if I would just kind of like say a few words by way of introduction of the morning, tell you just a bit about the Republican Party headquarters. And also, then we'll get right into the matters at hand, our business that we have come here for today. First thing that I always like to do is to recognize our elected officials that are with us. And of course, we have two featured speakers in Jim Denning, our state representative from District 19, and we'll introduce him in a moment. And then Sheriff Frank Denning is here. But we would like to acknowledge also the chair of the Johnson County Commission. Ed Eilert is here. If you would stand up, please. Let's welcome him. And we have former Commissioner Dolores Furtado here, also a former state representative from District 19. Dolores, thank you for coming today. Welcome to the Republican Party Headquarters. We're always happy to have folks from the other side coming.
We assumed it was open.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And you're welcome to come back here and hang out, especially for those of you that are Republicans, would like to get involved, plug in. We have a passion, and we had a great cycle in the election time this last time around of the 35 people on the ballot, 35 Republicans on the ballot, we elected 33 in our county. And so, good for them. And many of you were engaged in a race, or two, or five, or 33, and helped out, helped us to be successful. There is a map right behind me that kind of illustrates that. And that's what all the W's and the scribbling is on this map. If you look at this, this happens to be the 2009 version of state representative districts, and you can see that we took all but one of the state representative districts in our county. And we're grateful to all the hard work by the volunteers and the candidates, and hopefully make a big difference, get our state back on track. So we're delighted to invite you to come and participate. It's all driven by volunteers. No one is paid, and we have many people that have given more than full-time to serve in this capacity, and in working for candidates and working within the party. And so, we thank all of you. A couple of other people I wanted to introduce. I wanted to introduce Merrill Denning, who is our party secretary. Jay Barker is clear at the back, and he has been one of those practically full-time volunteers. Now is working not only with the Johnson County Republican Party, but has become an employee of the state Republican Party. So we're delighted to have someone today. Gavin Elsie helps us with all of our communications. Stand up Gavin. He does a great job with communications. And then the vice-chair of the Johnson County Republican Party is Doris Riley, and she's back there. You can see her silhouette. And thank you for coming. Make yourself at home. There are goodies in the back to eat and nibble on. We are in for a treat today. We've got a rock star in District 19 who's already carried on the floor of the House an amendment for the Constitution. I'm sure we'll hear about some of that today. And so, we're delighted to introduce to you State Representative Jim Denning.
Good morning, everyone. I have a really soft voice and no microphone today, so I'll try to yell, but even when I yell, sometimes I'm hard to hear. So I'll do my best, but if you can't hear me in the back, you're going to have to come up here. I think everybody knows that this is my first opportunity to serve in the legislature. So politically, a total greenhorn. So what I'm going to do today is talk about just major things that are affecting Kansas, Kansans, everybody in this room, from more of a financial outlook, because that's where my comfort zone is. If we get into the political outlook, you know Dolores is in the room, an ex-rep from Missouri in the room, so they can help me with the political discussion. But what I want to do today is just talk about the big picture that affects everybody in Kansas. And I brought some notes, so I wouldn't get too sidetracked here. The major thing that's impacting Kansas is our budget in general. The revenue cycle dropped off significantly in 2008 when the national economy slowed down. And when I talk about revenue cycle, it's really taxes. Obviously, in our businesses, when we sell something, we get money from the consumer. But the state of Kansas gets all of their money from taxes, either sales tax, or personal or property tax, and things like that, and income taxes. But right now, the budget by Kansas Constitution must be balanced every year. So we increased our sales tax by 1% last July in an attempt to balance our budget, because the expenses were somewhat fixed and escalating. So last year's legislatures decided the best approach to balance the budget would be for that 1% sales tax. So it was implemented. But the economy is still really sluggish. So the 1% did not produce enough revenue, and we didn't pull back on our spending. So I think we have a, right now as I stand here, I believe it's a $50 million budget deficit, which we have to close by June 30th. So what the governor does when we have a budget deficit, if he wants us to do a rescission bill, which immediately starts cutting spending, or comes up with another revenue source. But right now, we don't have a revenue source that we can implement in a hurry anyway. So the only alternative that Kansas has is we have to reduce our spending, and we have to reduce it in a hurry, by 50 million. So when you hear about the rescission bill, I think Brownback likes to call it a freeze bill, but it's really a cut the expenses in a real quick way bill. So that's what we've been working on now. And the House has a version, and then we sent our version to the Senate. The House finished up their version this week, and we cut enough expenses that we're actually going to have a $35 million surplus to start next year out. And Kansas' new year starts July 1st. So we just didn't go to zero. We took it further, and I think we're going to have a $35 million surplus if the Senate agrees, which they will not. They have to come to zero. But what the problem is, is if you look out five years, and I have the projections, and you know, five-year projections are about worth the value of the paper they're printed on, but you have to look at it, because that's the only tool we have. And when you look out five years, with Brownback's projection of saving $35 million coming into the next budget with $35 million extra, we only end next year with $7 million. So it's really a break even. And so that's why he wants to come in with an extra $35 million, so we don't have to have another rescission bill next year. So that's what we're looking at, is we're looking at only having $7 million left at the end of next year. By statute, I think we're supposed to have 7%, which is 400 million. So we are so far off the playing field that it's hardly even a discussion. That's what we're supposed to have. Now, $7 million, the Kansas budget is $6 billion, so you can just see, that probably lasted a couple of hours of spending. So it's a real serious problem. Now, the other thing that never gets talked about is to balance next year's budget, we're going to take $200 million from the Department of Transportation and bring it back into our checking account. Without that, we'd have to cut another $200 million out of the budget. That is a big number. So the good news is, the Department of Transportation has an extra $200 million. The bad news is, they do it by issuing debt. And that's the same way we all get angry when we hear the Treasury selling more bonds so the U.S. government can spend more. Well, that's what Kansas has done, and they've done it for the last three years. When we take this $200 million, we will have transferred almost a half of a billion dollars out of Department of Transportation back to our spending. So not only have we spent more than we've taken in, we've actually spent another half a billion dollars more. So you know, it's a real bleak picture that needs to be addressed for the long term. Our debt in Kansas is almost $4 billion. And our total, the general fund that all the sales taxes and personal property taxes go in and all the spending, is only $6 billion. And we have $4 billion in debt outstanding. And when I was doing the analysis, I was just looking year by year to see, you know, where's the debt coming from? And in 2005, Kansas took on over $1 billion in new debt. So I drilled down to find out why Kansas took on $1 billion in new debt. Well, over half of it was Capers decided to play in the derivatives, because they are so underfunded, they're underfunded by, I think, $7 billion. And that's the retirement fund that takes care of all the teachers and, you know, the firefighters. So that fund is underwater by $7 billion, because it's been neglected for 20 years. So what Capers decided to do, and I'm sure they had to have legislature approval, but they decided to be a risk-taker. They went out and Kansas borrowed $500 or $600 million at 3% or 4%, and Capers thought that they could earn 12% or 14%, and they got into the derivatives. And we all know, not very many of us understand derivatives, but I actually owned some in my corporation, and they are nasty when they reset every day. And it's like musical chairs. When they were resetting every day, and we had buyers every day, it was a good ride. But one day, like musical chairs, the music stopped, and there were only six chairs, and there were seven of us, and every day, one chair got taken away. So Kansas did a very risky maneuver at the worst possible time, because derivatives started unwinding really quickly in '07, and they got in the business at the end of '05. So it didn't turn out well for the maneuver. So there's half of that billion dollars. They took a risk, and if they would have earned 14%, they would have been heroes, but they didn't. So they're not heroes. The other debt was simply just an expansion of the agencies with equipment and building and remodels and human beings going in to the agencies, mostly commerce and labor. They had enormous expansion of their workforce. And I've not had the time to drill down to see why that happened. I just know from just counting FTEs, full-time employees, that it got really big. So that's the picture for '12. And what Brownback said at the State of the Union, or the State of the State, he said that this will be the last time that he will transfer money from KDOC to the checking account. So having him drawing the line in the sand for himself, I don't think he wants to be a liar right out of the chute. So if he says no more transfers, then we've really got to get serious about our spending and our revenue cycle. Because again, over the last three years, we've taken a half of a billion dollars out of Capers. And he's told the world that that would be the last transfer. So as you go in and look at this five-year projection for '13, '14, '15, and '16, at the end of '16, we're $1.5 billion short on a cumulative basis. So that's withholding schools at the level that they currently are, with no inflation for anything. And what's happening is, the economy, I think they got the revenue cycle correct. They think it's going to be between 3.5% and a 4% growth. I think everybody in the room would be comfortable with that. Maybe not so much this year, it's still a little soft, but I think that is pretty close to being right. I don't think it's optimistic. I think we will hit a 4% growth cycle. But Medicaid and SRS services are going to be growing between 6% and 7%. So even with that good growth, Medicaid will consume more than we bring in in that cycle. And that's what's causing us to have $2 to $3 million shortfall every year. So we have, you know, what we did in '05 with Capers, and it came home to haunt us in '10, that's a five-year cycle. So now, we know that we have a rough patch for the next five years. So really, we need to start making those difficult decisions that are really unpopular for many years. It's just not this year, and it's just not next year. It's a long-term fix. And with my background, I'm not afraid of these awful numbers. I like that challenge. It's very doable. And so, you know, I stand up here not pessimistic, but optimistic. That will be, you know, I'm only one of 125, so when you're one of 125, there's a lot of darn opinions up there. But, so I can't, you know, change the direction by myself, but I certainly am not afraid of this shortfall. And I think we can fix it, and I think it'll be, you know, painful, no doubt about it, it's going to be across the spectrum. All right, so what Brownback's done is he set the stage for this five-year program of trying to control our spending and increase our revenue cycle. So when you hear the word structural spending changes, every time Brownback is in the room, he'll mention that structural problem with Capers, Medicaid mostly, and the schools as well. So here's where we are. If you take Capers, the schools, and Medicaid, SRS, just those three items that I mentioned consumes 80 cents of every dollar Kansas collects in taxes. So the 80/20 rule always works in life. You know, if you had 10 kids, eight would be good. Frank, I can hit that ratio. So the 80/20 rule works all the time in life, and it works the same in politics. So like it or not like it, we have to do something to those three, to structurally change how we handle that. Now, Capers, Capers is just money. So that's a huge task, but you know, what we need to do with Capers, it's called, and you've heard this term, it's defined benefit, where it's based on an actuarial calculation. But if you don't make your deposits, and Kansas has it for 20 years, once it gets to the point of no return, you can't fund it. So you know Bethlehem Steel, many years ago, I was in college still, so it was in the late '70s. Bethlehem Steel was the very first huge employer in U.S. that couldn't fund its defined benefit plan, and it failed because of that. It didn't fund it, it got to the point where it couldn't, so it failed, went into bankruptcy, took a lot of their pension liabilities and gave it to the U.S. government, sorted it all out, and came out a pretty strong company. So how long ago was that? 30-some years ago? In my own personal experience, I had to abandon my defined benefit plan in 1993, because I couldn't fund it. You know, we were all getting along in the tooth, and my business was getting bigger. So I had to stop it. Well, that defined benefit plan, that is the lifeline for lots of folks on retirement. It's more than Social Security. They depended on that. So you just can't have a heart attack happen and say, you know, as of Monday, it's a defined contribution plan. We all know that. But we've got to do some kind of phase-out from defined benefit to defined contribution. Mathematically, they don't work. They work when the triangle's like this, when there's a few people in it and a whole lot of people paying. But once the triangle goes like that, the math no longer works, especially if you're not disciplined enough to fund it every year. So we haven't funded it appropriately for 20 years, so you can do, you know, you can have any kind of conversation you want, but mathematically, it's to the point of no return. So what we have to do is look at the folks on Capers, look at the folks that are close to be in retirement, and make sure that they have their guaranteed revenue stream, and the folks that are new, and then, you know, the ones that maybe have three to five years of service. And certainly, the new ones are going to have to be put into a different type of plan. So you know, just taking off another layer of the onion, because a lot of folks don't like defined contribution plans, because it does fluctuate with the market. And that is so painful when you go through '08 and '09 and you see 30% of your whole retirement plan deteriorate. I get it. But there's modern designs where when you come out at retirement, you can put your money in, it's somewhat like an annuity, which have a bad rap, but you can put your money into an annuity and get a guaranteed income stream for the rest of your life, based on a 6% or 7% return. So those exist, so that'll take some of the pressure off of everybody worried about this in retirement. So there's lots of things to do with Capers, but we just need, we have to, I think we need to address, and I think that's one of those financial things that we need to address this year. Medicaid, I don't know enough about the whole Medicaid world to talk too deep, but Medicaid has mandatory programs that you must do if you're going to take any federal money. And then there's plans that are enhancements. And the ones that we mandatorily have to keep, and take care of the folks that can't take care of themselves and need a helping hand, that has to stay in place. And obviously, we can't tamper with that for many reasons. But I think what the new director is going to do, is he's going to look at the programs that are enhancement or optional, and do something like a comparative effectiveness study, or dynamic scoring, whatever the buzzword is, to see if those plans are really, or programs are really producing something that is helping, and just not creating a job for somebody, or making something even worse. So that is an enormous task. If you think healthcare in general is complicated, when you get into the Medicaid world, it's a factor of probably 10. So that is going, that's going to be probably a two- or three-year project. But I think there are some things that we can do in Medicaid and not affect the core that needs to be kept in place to take care of the folks that can't take care of themselves. Now, schools. We can have a week-long session in here on school funding. The school funding formula is very complex, and a lot of folks have taken a lot of hours to explain it to me and just increment. So I sort of get it if I just look at it at increments. But what's complicated about the school formula, it has the base rate, and then it has all these weights. And you know, some schools get extra money for being small, and some schools get extra money for being large. And then we have the free and reduced lunch. So there are a lot of things that are being looked at at the school formula to make it more fairer for Johnson County in particular. And what happens in the school formula is, they want to make sure that certain schools, and mostly Johnson County, don't get so far superior to the schools in Western Kansas, that they do what's called an equalization. So a lot of times, and I'm not quite sure 100% on this math, if Johnson County produces a dollar, we might get 30 cents of that dollar, and 70 cents has to get equalized out. So you have, there has to be some equalization, because in Western Kansas, there is no economic activity that's taxed. And maybe agriculture, maybe they're going to come into the tax world. You know, I don't know that as well. I think what probably needs to happen is, you know, that lots of suitable education that Brownback wants the House to work on. I'm hoping that the schools, you know, the senior administrators in the school, I hope they're, they need to be at the table early. And right now, when I talked to them Wednesday at Johnson County Delegation, they had not engaged yet. They were waiting for an invitation. Well, Dolores knows how committee works, and if you have somebody that's smart, they better be at the committee early rather than later. Because there's a lot of us at those tables that, you know, I might know finance, but I don't know much about schools. So the administrators need to get there, and they need to get there in a hurry. But the way I look at it, just from a financial perspective, if we can get some kind of suitable education established, that we know that the kids are coming out to a level that they can operate in this society, if we have that, then we can equalize that piece. And I think that will make it fair. And then going forward, if Johnson County, or Sedgwick County, or Wyandotte, if they want to enhance their school system, then they should be able to do it locally through property tax, which is the most despised tax in the world, the sales tax. They ought to be able to do something if they want their schools to be above and beyond the, I'll call it the minimum benchmark of suitable education. They need to have that capability, and more importantly, we should not have to equalize the rest of the state. And I think if we can get something done like that, then the cost of the education will go below 50% of the budget at the state level, and whatever communities want to do at their local level will be more fair. So that's a very complex, controversial topic, but if you just take a step back and just look at it in that simplistic, which in politics, it gets really complex in a hurry. But something's going to have to happen, because with education consuming more than 50% of the dollar, and Medicaid and Capers bringing it up to 80%, it won't work going forward. It just won't. So all those things have to get looked at. So let's talk about the really major bills that we worked on so far. The one that is new to everybody is the PEGO. And what PEGO is supposed to do is that when a bill comes to the floor, if somebody wants to put an amendment on it, and usually amendments have to do with spending more money. So if somebody wants to put an amendment on it to, and we'll use the favorite topic, if somebody wants to give $100 million to school to enhance something, the free lunch program, which is really popular. If somebody brings an amendment down and wants to put $100 million on the budget, it's really difficult when you're sitting there to vote against it, because then you get, you know, then you get all the mad moms, because once you hit that no, then you're in the crosshairs. So what they've done, leadership, it says, if you want to put $100 million on anything, you have to save $100 million from someplace. And it has to be just not, we're going to sell a building for $100 million, that's not how it works. It's going to take $100 million from the veterans. Then supposedly, it's supposed to say, well, the amendment, if you couldn't find $100 million, then the amendment won't go forward, then you don't have to vote against it. It's really, that's a political thing. So then you don't have to vote against kids, and you don't have to vote against veterans. So that, hopefully, we'll see. I mean, this will be, it's a test. Nobody's done it in the state of Kansas before. So you know, we'll get through these next two years. The rules only go for two years. And if it doesn't work, you know, it's not a constitutional amendment, it's just two years. So far, and obviously, being a Republican, I like the rule, because it's already kept me from voting against something that I would have not wanted to vote against. So we'll see if that controls the spending. It's going to, it's here, we've already got it. Okay, so let's talk about the rescission bill. You see that 7.5% that we're cutting from salaries? We started, in appropriations, again, politics, you know, we started out the process, and I was in the room, and I thought it was a 7.5%. I was in the room, and I thought it was a seven and a half percent across-the-board cut. Well, I have limited hearing, and what it ended up being the next day after we woke up, is it was seven and a half percent target, so not really a cutting salaries, it was just said, these agencies need to save seven and a half percent from anything, from not, you know, not buying office supplies. So it was just, then it ended up being a target, because overnight, they caught so much flat from cutting, somebody that makes thirty thousand dollars a year at the state, cutting their salary by seven and a half percent until the end of June, they caught so much flat, so we had this correction to the bill, where now it's just a seven and a half percent of salaries target, so we're telling the department heads, go out and save seven and a half percent. Well, that lasted for a day, and then we had another memory correction, and now it's just for folks that make over a hundred thousand, and legislators. So the legislators gave themselves a, a salary cut, and I don't know if many of you know how much legislators make, but it's, I think it's nine dollars an hour if you work an eight-hour day, and you really, if you wanna be effective, you work about a twelve-hour day. So we make about six dollars an hour. So cutting our salaries, it makes a good political presentation, but we make so little that it doesn't really matter. I mean, it doesn't matter to folks that are old, it does matter to the kids that are twenty-five, that they, you know, they're gonna feel the pain just like everybody else, unless the administration can find it someplace else. So that's the clarity on the seven and a half percent salary. If not across the board, and if, if department heads can flush it out someplace else, their department won't even take a salary cut. So the, the healthcare freedom amendment, that was the next piece of legislation that's cleared the House, and that is a const, it's, it's a change to the Constitution, so you need two-thirds of the vote of the House and the Senate before it comes to the public to vote on. And the healthcare freedom amendment was just falling in line with what many states have done, just saying that the individual mandate that says if you have a pulse, that you must buy healthcare, this mandate said that the US government couldn't make you buy healthcare if you didn't want to. That was the major provision of the amendment, and that's what gets most of the press. And we all know that the Supreme Court will eventually rule on that, and it comes down to the Tenth Amendment Commerce Clause, can the US government make you do, make you buy a commodity? So you can argue, you know, healthcare is too important, it has to be mandated, but the argument is, if it's healthcare, could it be an electric car, could it be something else? So I think everybody on both sides of the aisle, you know, everybody, everybody in the United States is interested in that for, for lots of reasons. What doesn't get much traction is that there was an amendment to, to the bill that said no conditions could be put on a physician renewing or getting their medical license. And that's went under the radar, but the reason why that's important to, to me, and it probably should be to you as well, is that right now, there are no conditions on a medical license. If you go to school, get all your boards, get your CE, you're not a bad doctor, you're not been sanctioned by the, by the Medical Society, you can get a medical license and practice medicine. And when it comes to renewal, if you not had any sanctions and done your continuing education, you get your license renewed. But what's gonna happen is, when the federal healthcare law, if it, if it isn't bound unconstitutional, when it comes into play, and Commissioner Prager verified this last Wednesday, is that sixty percent of Kansans will be eligible for Medicaid in some fashion. So that's a big, that's a big number. And Medicaid does not pay very good, and so in my personal practice, I've chosen not to take Medicaid, never have, in thirty-five years, have not taken Medicaid. A lot of the practice is made up of Medicare, and so I made the decision that I've got enough government business that I don't want anymore, and being in ophthalmology, most of our patients are older, and most patients in Medicaid are younger. So it was an easy decision for me. I did not wanna take Medicaid just because it didn't pay enough, and I needed to have the exam rooms filled up with insurance plans that pay better, you can pay your employees better, get better employees, so I'm going around this, setting the table, so to speak. But what will happen is if, if sixty percent of this room came onto Medicaid, there wouldn't be enough doctors to see you, and the lines will get really long. Well, once that happens, the state of Kansas will say, I'll fix that, if you want a medical license renewed, then you must take Medicaid. Well, you know, if you wanna work for six dollars an hour, that's your choice, somebody shouldn't make you work for less than what you think you're worth. So this no conditions was that Kansas can't make physicians take a, a med, take Medicaid. You know, you can say, well, you know, you need to do the right thing to take Medicaid. Well, when's it gonna end? So I think that is an important provision of the constitutional amendment. And, and the other thing that will happen is that if the healthcare bill goes forward, that insurance exchanges that are part of the healthcare plan, that the healthcare exchanges will have four plans, silver, gold, bronze, and platinum, and that's what the government has termed them, is those four plans, and they'll pay sixty percent of your healthcare, seventy percent of your healthcare, eighty percent of your healthcare, and ninety percent of your healthcare. So even though these plans come into play, a lot of folks think that their healthcare is going to be free, and it's far from free, wouldn't, you know, sixty percent of your coverage, seventy, eighty, or ninety, so there's no, there's no, not really free. Creams may be lower, but it's not free. But what will happen is, and I'll pick on Blue Cross and Blue Shield since they can take it, they'll probably participate, and they'll have those four plans. And one plan they'll pay really well on to the doctors, but the other three, they're gonna pay really crappy on. So what we'll do is, all the doctors will take the good plan and say, I don't wanna participate with the other plans. Well, the state will do is say, if you participate with one, you must participate with all. So you know, just keep on eroding any free market that we have left. So this amendment would not allow that, and so I think it's important, but that's not getting much play. Now, just a, a few tidbits, just for fun. A lot of folks think that Medicare is mandatory, and, and having individual insurance mandatory is nothing unusual. Medicare is one, is one hundred percent elective. Part, there's many parts to Medicare, but the most popular, Part B pays all the doctor bills and all of the ambulatory surgery centers, okay, that's what comes out of Part B. One hundred percent elective. You didn't, if you're sixty-five, and you don't want Part B, you simply don't pay your a hundred and ten dollars a month and check the box that I want it. If you come in later, there is a penalty, but you don't have to participate in Part B. Part D, which is the popular pharmaceutical piece, one hundred percent elective, you don't have to participate in Part D. Now, an interesting tidbit on Part D, there's only one government entitlement program in the history of the United States that's ever come in under budget, just one. Medicare Part D, the pharmaceutical. And why, why did it come in under budget, and why has it always been under budget? It's because that particular entitlement is one hundred percent in the free market. Medicare has their own traditional plan, and then they have their Medicare Advantage plans, so Medicare has about eighty percent, government has about eighty percent of Medicare that they administer. Medicare loses nine million dollars an hour, another tidbit. But Part B is all in the free market, nothing of it is administered, administered by the government. So the pharmaceutical companies, they've been able to make a handsome profit and come in under budget. So I just say, my point is, there is, there are still some free market elements that work. Now, the plan is really expensive, no doubt about it, but it's the only plan in the history of the United States that has ever come in under budget, and it's all in the free market. I just think that's a good tidbit to note. Now, when you look at Massachusetts, because they have mandatory healthcare up in Massachusetts, and it's, obviously, it's crushing the state, and they're trying to figure out ways to control their healthcare, and they're, they've got bills all the time that are doing exactly what I'm saying, is physicians have to take all the plans, and they can't, and insurance companies can't pay more than a hundred and ten percent of Medicare. So what, what's happening in Massachusetts, they've got a six-year head start, so one just looks there and tries to put as many roadblocks here, so we don't go down that path. But in Massachusetts, if you do a tax, if you do your personal tax return in Massachusetts, it's three pages long, very similar to Kansas, but in Massachusetts, there's four extra pages to calculate your healthcare coverage, gather information on your family's healthcare, and calculate your penalty, you can go ahead. So just think of that, tax return goes from three to four pages, so talk about it a little bit more paperwork. So that's, that's the third big bill, is the healthcare freedom amendment, which is the constitutional amendment, it sailed through the House, and we had votes on both sides of the aisle, so that was a positive. The Senate will probably use it for bathroom tissue paper when they get it, they won't support it. So I'm not optimistic anyway, unless they can look at the amendment, just not the met, you know, just not the mandatory, but if they look at the amendments that have been put in place to protect the healthcare industry, which is twenty percent of the economy, it's not, it's not, it's not small, it's not super special interests, it's twenty percent of the economy. So that's, that, that's that. The other bill that will come up Monday, it's, it's House Bill two thousand and six, and it's the repeal of the residency tuition for illegal aliens at colleges. So that's been a really hot topic, and more than likely, I'd be shocked if it didn't sail through the House and stall in the Senate, but that will, that will come to the House Monday or Tuesday, and I have a feeling it's going to pass easily there. And then House Bill twenty sixty-seven, that was a bill that Klobloch has worked on, and it's, it's really, it's a big bill, it's many pages, and, you know, and it gets to be twenty pages long, there's lots of stuff in it, but what the bill wants to do is require photo ID at the voting booth, which I don't, you know, when I poll watched, I don't think anybody's gonna have heart room with that, everybody really wanted to show their ID. I don't see that being too big of a deal, but inside the plan, inside the documents, there's, there's, there's more layers of, you produce a birth certificate when you vote, when you register for the first time, or when you move, and I think that, that, that sounds like a great idea, and everybody, you need to figure out a way to make sure that there's no fraud going on. I think we're gonna get pushback from there, from folks that, you know, the paperwork of getting the birth certificate when you move, you have to reproduce it. So that will be interesting to see how that plays out there, you know, in the legislature, you just hear things in the hallway, and you're riding the elevator, and there are some Republican legislators that are thinking the public's gonna push back on this paper, because we've moved into a technology society, and this is really pushing some paper. So I think to make it successful, we're gonna have to figure out to do it without paper. I, I saw a woman yesterday have her Price Chopper card scanned in her phone, so now she doesn't even wanna have her Price Chopper card, it was scanned on the surface of her phone, and they scanned it, so that's where everything's going, I think that's where we're gonna get the pushback. But I, but I know some of the bill will survive, and that showing your ID when you vote, I'd be shocked if, if that didn't go, but I think since we live in a technology world, we're gonna have to figure out a better way to do it than get a bunch of paper going. That, again, being a freshman, I could be totally, totally wet there, but that's what I hear. Now, the other thing that is going to come, and it's one of Brownback's major points, and as I stand here today, I probably can't support it, and I'll explain it to you, just because you're gonna hear so much about it, is the rural opportunity zone. What Brownback wants to do is, he's identified, I think it's forty counties in western Kansas that continue to lose population. And what happens when you lose population is, there's no sales tax base, so the schools need to get more and more equalization for one thing to, to stay, and nobody wants to give up their school, it's, it's really, it's traumatic. But the other thing is, housing deteriorates as people move out, it's just, it's a natural progression, since we're not agricultural-based with, you know, a farmer can probably farm ten thousand acres by himself, it used to take a lot of people. So we, you know, we're all moving away from, you know, agriculture's very productive because of the technology, so we produce a lot of food, but we don't need a lot of humans to do it. So everybody's migrating to Johnson County, where the jobs are, and western Kansas continues to lose population and, and lose sales tax base. So what Brownback wants to do is, he's identified these counties, and he wants to, anybody that lives outside of Kansas, they move to one of these counties, can be tax-free for five years. Well, it sounds, again, mathematically, that sounds great, to get folks to move, but having grown up in western Kansas, you're not gonna move to a county to save four to six percent of your income. He thinks that the folks are gonna retire in these counties. Well, you're not gonna live too far away from a hospital, you're just not. And if those counties don't have hospitals, that's gonna be a pretty big road to push, because I just, I can't see it being successful just for that reason, and the housing, it's not there anymore, it's, it's, it's not good. So what I would propose, if he asked me, would be, I'd go out in those same, that same area, and I'd find the rural silos that have actually have a sales tax base, and they're actually growing, and I would do it in those counties. Because if they're surviving and getting a tax base, and the, and the rest of the community around them is not, why don't we do something to the silos, there's probably five or six in western Kansas, to enhance those communities, to get people to stay there and move there? And then, everybody complains about Crawl in Johnson County, where all the parks get bigger and bigger? Well, that's exactly what you would want out in rural Kansas, you'd start with a small silo, we'll use my hometown as Great Bend. Start with Great Bend, and have something like he's proposing there, and then Ellenwood, which is right down the road, when people don't wanna live in a big city of thirty thousand, then they'll move to Ellenwood. And then when Ellenwood gets to thirty thousand, they'll move to Dundee, and it'll just be cool. And I, I can't see any other approach, if we're going to try to keep western Kansas populated, you can't take a shotgun and just shoot it out there in the forty counties and expect something to get in the legs and take off. So I'm not real keen on the rural opportunity zone, but it's a really high priority for him, so if that would come to the floor today with what I know, you know, I'd hit the red button, so, for what that's worth. So that's all I had, on my limited experience so far in the legislature. And I think what we could do is, we could have Frank come up and talk about public safety in the Sheriff's Department, and then it'll be open season on us, and you can ask us anything that you want. Would that be fair? Thanks.
Good job. (applause) Thanks, Jim. Open season? (laughter)
Open season?[598.29][598.29](laughter) For those of you who don't know, we have the same last name, but I think most of you do know that we are related, we're brothers, we have the same parents, by the birth order, I'm the second oldest, and Jim is the sixth. I got in this business in 1969 as a volunteer, and I've never quit. I came here in 1978 as a deputy sheriff, and I was assigned to the jail. And from there, it's been a real experience, a real learning experience for me. And I've always loved this business, and I still do, even though I've seen it take its ups and downs. It's like Jim, it's basically new for me to be in the political arena, I'm on my second term, my terms have run four years, and I'm up for reelection in 2012. So, what's went on since, let's just go back to '04? And the answer to that is a lot. I've had to do some catch-up. We run the second largest detention system in the state, or the first-place winner of that is Sedgwick County. They're what I call the top five in the state of Kansas, and that's Sedgwick, Johnson, Wyandotte, Shawnee, and Douglas County. So, what you're gonna start seeing, just within the next year or two, those that have been sentenced to prison for 10 to 20 years are coming out, are coming out in the next two years, the boomers. They've been incarcerated for 20 years plus. Jim referred to it just a little bit ago about technology, you think they're there? You think they can come out and get a job in this society after 20 years? Think there's anything there? What do you suppose the biggest avenues for returning inmates to this state are? Where do you think the biggest population centers for those folks are going to be? Number one, Sedgwick County. Number two, Wyandotte County. You wanna take a guess on number three? The county designators are J.O. Johnson. So, we really have some issues at hand here, we really do. What we've done since '04 is, I approached the commission for a couple of things. One, we needed to add on to the detention facility, and we did that. My goal was at the time, and it still is, because I think what my intention was, was to take public safety out into the 2012s, and say we need the appropriate number of beds, spaces, to accommodate that, because I have 18 contracts throughout the state of Kansas, 18 contracts for jail space. We have been farming inmates out, in other words, taking Johnson County inmates to these counties, for almost 30 years. For the first time, last year, in 2010, we have not farmed out one inmate, they're all here. And we've got some alternatives working, where we've managed to lower some of the jail populations by looking at some alternatives, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. But the commission agreed, when we needed to add this additional space, instead of just leaving it unfinished in concrete space, and then say, okay, when we need it, five, 10 years later, we're gonna finish it, it gets very expensive, most of the time, the design at the time will not be adequate for what you have, when that need is confronting you. And I felt it would be, as far as affordability, it would be cheaper, and it is, it would be the design of the building where we could accommodate more inmates with less space, and still not get ourselves into issues with federal government, American Civil Liberties Union, et cetera, et cetera. And so, what I did was, I went back, almost like a linear system, for those of you who are not familiar with jails, linear systems are where we're housing, we have 64-person modules, they have places to sleep, but the majority of them are out in the open dayrooms, and I know there's been a lot of, or some conversation about, because of the way the building's designed, that internally, they have accesses to a lot of technology and so forth, and that's just not true. There aren't TVs in every cell. We have to provide them with communication, and that's what they have, and it's done at a minimum. We have introduced technology in various ways in there, we built it into the system, and we're not moving inmates to deal with family members, or even their attorneys. We've got electronic systems set up internally, where lawyers can conduct visits electronically via the computer, if you're familiar with webcams, and Skype, and those sorts of things. We're employing very similar technology, other than it's encrypted, because lawyer-client has the privilege. We've expanded that, and we've taken it into, our first expansion was into the public defender's office, and like the district attorney, those are probably our bigger clients, if you will. We expanded it into the public defender's office, where they can do their interviews from their office, and we don't have to move inmates, and we don't have to clear those folks when they come into our secure facility, so we're saving time, and we're saving money by electronically conducting some of our business that we're mandated to do. We went ahead and set one of those up now in the courthouse, for those attorneys who work in that area there, that can go to the courthouse, and I'll explain why we've done that there, because we have the downtown Olathe Jail closed for remodeling, and I'm gonna explain that here in a second. And so, we put that technology there, where the attorneys can interview their clients there as well, without going out to New Century, which is in Gardner. And then, again, going through the security checks that we have in place, and for us, time, money, and the fact that we, you know, it takes people to move people in my system. And so, electronically, with the technology, we're able to do that, without continuing our expenses to continue to rise. And before I even move on from there, you know, when the commission agreed, when the remodel is done downtown, we'll have 1,087 beds available in Johnson County. This morning, the population is at 742. And you go, well, you got too many beds here. Well, this county grows 10 to 15,000, or excuse me, 10 to 13,000 per year, with no slowdown until into the 2020s, according to the SIRI study. So, when I go back and check population growth, we've been right on target. This county continues, even with the economic downturn, this county has continued to stay on pace of 10,000, 13,000 per year. That gives me, in my business, 300 new clients, AKA inmates, AKA people who violate the law. And so, it's necessary for me to think ahead, which we did. You should not hear of anybody talking about building and adding on to the Gardner Jail, the Olathe Jail is basically what it is, up until into the 2020s. Now, what we've done in the interim there is, we've looked at some alternatives to incarceration. And I'm very careful, I've been in this business, as I told you, since about '71, full-time, 1971, and so, I'm a law and order kind of guy. And I've been a critic of this system when we started looking at alternatives, because I said, you know what, we're not gonna hug thugs, okay? However, the costs continue to rise, and in my business, as I, as I tell the public, I tell you, and I tell the commissioners, it costs money to do justice. I can't turn the strigot off. If somebody said, you know, when does that stop? Well, it doesn't stop, clock's running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm spending money every second. So, it's up to me, and several other folks, to look at alternative means of how we're handling this criminal population. And that's what we're doing right now, and have been for the last two years. And some of the things that we're involved in are called second chance reentry. Remember a little bit ago, when I told you how many were coming out, that will be coming out in the next two years? I'm telling you, there's no place for them to go. They don't have the skills. They can't even run some of the equipment in the landscaping business today, that's how much that has changed. So, where do you think they're gonna be if we don't find alternatives here? They're gonna be in your garage, in your living room, and they're not gonna be your guests, okay? So, it's a very serious issue that we're gonna have to address, and continue to address with these alternative programs. It has not hugged a thug, but if we don't give it an opportunity to do some intervention here, I'm gonna get further and further behind, and you're gonna see me or another sheriff stand in front of you and go, we need to build another jail. And you only do that one way, that's with public dollars. And we don't generate income, I'm not an income generator, I don't have a private business, it's all spend. So, what we've done is, last year, we went to the Kansas Legislature, and we got some legislative changes that were needed, so we can actually take inmates that are in the sheriff's custody, and be allowed to put them in a program, that's called a work-release reentry. In other words, we're going to give them the tools, we're gonna try, to give them the tools, while they're currently serving sentence, so we can move them back into the community on a regulated basis. And then, my goal is to do post-release follow-up. Reason for that being is, once, as long as they're in my custody, and they're inside a jail, you're not gonna have any issues, because we have them. They can have any issues if they're doing 20 years in the penitentiary, so we have them. But you're gonna have to confront the fact that over 90% of them will be released, whether it's a county jail, or a state prison, or a federal prison, 90%. Those are our laws. We have failed as a system, I was brought up under, taught under the punishment theory. For us, it's all about punishment, you do five years, 10 years, 15 years, whatever, it's about punishment. And it still is, it's gotta work with both, it's the old carrot stick though. And so, to move them into these appropriate programs, and identify their, what we call criminogenic needs, and we wanna work with high-risk offenders, because they're the most likely to what? Reoffend, re-enter the system. I've got a cat out here right now, that we've booked 26 hots, 26 hots. That breaks cycles. Somehow, we've gotta do that appropriate intervention. The post-release thing, to me, is so important, because we need to be able to track these offenders for at least three to five years, to see whether or not they can stay afloat, in other words, stay out of trouble, not commit any more crimes, not get violated on their parole conditions, and they end up back in the system. And it's quite a challenge, because basically, the empirical data's there, the best evidence practices are there, they say it will work, but it's brand-new to law enforcement. I don't know of any other sheriff in the country right now that's actually taken on a second chance program, because we're gonna start it in the jails, while they are with us, sentenced, and then get them ready for the community corrections population, and get them ready for the work release, and then, all the fees that are attached to that, because they have to pay back some, to sit here and tell you that they're gonna pay back 100%, there's no way they can get there. Because the majority of them that we're dealing with are in the high-risk offender category right now, some of them can't read, we've started literacy programs, some of them can't control their temper, we've got anger management. Biggest issues are substance abuse, whether it's alcohol, narcotics, or prescription drugs. Those three things are huge, they're huge. And then, the other component is mental illness. 17% of my population in jails are diagnosed mentally ill. We run, Johnson County runs the largest mental hospital in the state of Kansas. There is no other place for them to go, there's no funding, not picking on the legislature, there's no funding, the state of Kansas has gotten out of the business like every other state in the union. Kansas is no different than anybody else. And I like to tell those that listen, especially elected officials in Topeka, is that there's no money in mental illness, so what we've done is, if you just go out on the streets of Topeka, you'll see what happened. They're homeless, they're in the street, and they commit petty crimes because they're not on medication. They don't have the appropriate intervention, they don't have the appropriate services, and they can't afford it, and so, they come, and we feed them, and house them, we medicate them. The average length of stay for a mentally ill inmate in my system is 78 days. The average length of stay for an inmate is 17 days. Do you see the difference? Cost. If we broke down the costs, Commissioner Lindstrom challenged me five years ago, and said, I need to see an apples-to-apples comparison here, I wanna know exactly what this costs. I hear these prices throughout the country about what it costs. And so, for the first time ever, we actually did a breakdown. We have a white paper that's been published, it's on our website, it's available throughout the country, it's been published, and several other sheriff's offices throughout the country have asked for that data, that we readily give it to them, because it's very expensive to do what we do. The average cost per day on the average inmate is $104 per day, your money, my money, tax money, per day. Remember, I told you I had 727, last year, I had 1,000 inmates in custody. So, you can see what we're dealing with here, but the average cost, the meals cost about $1.30. The average cost just for the inmate, that's three hots and a kye, is about $73 a day. The $104 comes from the administrative costs, utility costs, transportation costs, court costs, you know, to move them, and all of those things, we have that broke down for you, that's readily available to you, it's on our website, jokoshare.org, and it's there. A couple of other things that we're working on, I was just in DC two weeks ago, I was there the day the State of the Union was being delivered, and I was impressed by the security there in the DC area, and I know that they had, the day before, two days before, that they had an explosion at an airport last year, and I think that just compounded some things there in the DC area. The reason why I was there, I was meeting with what's called major sheriffs, and those are major county sheriffs that have populations of 500,000-plus. And also, meeting there with those specific chiefs of police who are considered major city chiefs of police, and we come there on a yearly basis to discuss legislative issues on Capitol Hill. And we basically, the large sheriffs, and the large city chiefs, we have three things in common. Budget's one, and I'm gonna let Jim handle that stuff, I'll answer questions on my local budget, but budget, gangs, and immigration. Those are the three big problems that we have to address, and have been addressing. So, somebody asked me earlier, you know, what about the gang presence here in Johnson County? It is not only here, it is beginning to get a foothold, it is beginning to leave a footprint. And so, just three weeks ago, I've detached a deputy sheriff to the gang task force that's basically a new upstart here in the metropolitan area, because we've got to have a presence in these counties that surround us, we've gotta take a look at, and do something about those particular issues, and the only way to do that is to get involved in it. And when I approached the, I was approached by the FBI to see if we'd put somebody on that task force, and I said, I will do it only if you assure us that you will put a footprint in Johnson County. In other words, I'm gonna loan you a person, but if we don't see any activity of your work here in this county, then they're coming home, because we do it on our own. But we need that wider berth, if you will, by belonging to those task forces, so we can address that problem metro-wide, and even several stateswide, and then, I take the message back to DC, and we're addressing it nationally. Does that make sense? So, if we don't do something ourselves, it will not get done. If you recall here about, hmm, it's been probably two months now, maybe three, there was a homicide on I-35 South in Olathe, remember that? Just happened to be a KHP officer there, thought he had a drunk, because all of a sudden, the car started sort of to hit the retainer wall, et cetera. I would really like to have talked to him about five seconds after he got out of the car, and watched a guy come out of the backseat bloody, and then fall down dead in front of him, the reaction that, that young trooper had. I can't talk a lot about it, because that's an open investigation, and I don't wanna violate court rules, and I don't wanna violate, you know, because it has a pending trial coming, but I can tell you this, neither of those people in that car, or another car, were Johnson County residents, they had no ties to Johnson County, okay? Except for one. You gonna guess what that tie is? Drugs. Okay? No, as a matter of fact, these weren't illegals. As a matter of- As a matter of fact, one was from the Aryan Nation, the Aryan Brotherhood. And the other was from the Crips, which is typically a black gang, that are Americans. Okay? Now, I can't get into any more detail, other than there was some mistrust there, there was a business transaction, it obviously went afoul, and somebody ended up dead. Okay? Now, how does that impact Johnson County? Boy, let's see. We tied up the interstate system for four hours. That cost the local economy over a half a million dollars, because we had the system shut off. They're now temporarily, we're in our custody. They're eventually gonna have to go back to Texas, because they're wanted down there for several other things, murder among them. So that group, right now, is sitting in your jail, at your expense, because the homicide occurred here in this county. Okay? That's why we have to get involved in some of these other programs, to see if we can identify, apprehend, or prevent. If we can make it strong enough, tough enough here, as we've made our, I've always said this, Johnson County law enforcement's very aggressive, and aggressive in an intellectual way, and with boots on the ground. Because the communities, you have said, "That's what we want." And you've paid for it. And we're very good at what we do. And so, because of that presence, you have a county that I like to say, "When you're in your neighborhood and you're taking a walk at 9:00 at night, the person coming up behind you is probably your neighbor." And that's a good thing. But I don't wanna give you a sense of false security and say that we're not dealing with some really, really critical issues, because we are. We're involved in about five different separate task forces. That are involving anywhere from narcotics trade, to the cartel, to organized crime, to dealing with local gangs, local criminal activity. And so, that doesn't even stop there with what we're doing internally, that the deputy sheriffs are doing every day on the streets, and that all the municipal police departments up here are doing every day on the streets. So you can see what we're talking about here, and everything that we're talking about here, as Jim likes to say, "Bottle of money." And this is very expensive business. It costs money to do justice. We won't agree on everything, but I think on the majority of what you will agree with, it is the look of this county, the quality of life in this county. We'll all agree that it's pretty gosh darn good. Especially where we're located, and what we're doing every day, every day. You are, I am, those of us involved in the system. I know eventually, it's going to come up, probably in questions, and sheriff, "What are we doing about illegal immigrants? What have you been doing about illegal immigrants? Do we have any illegal immigrants in the state of Kansas?" The answer is, the estimated population today is probably about 75,000. It's probably greater than that. We don't have a good partnership with the federal government. We have not had. I've been dealing with illegal immigrants since I got into this business. I worked for a brief period of time in Garden City, Kansas, as a police officer. And in 1977, we were taken into custody, notice I said "into custody," about 120 a month in Garden City, Kansas. In the seventies, alright? Into custody. There's a key word there, custody. Because we had a full-service immigration office there, at the time, it was called Immigration and Naturalization Services. INS. Today, it's ICE. Okay? Lot has changed. There's no presence anymore in these rural communities where the corporate farms were using them, other businesses were using them, and it became quite a haven. What hasn't changed is the influx of illegal immigrants. That hasn't changed. In fact, it's gotten more. The population continues to grow. It's actually, be real straightforward and honest, our mother had a term, it was kinda Germanic, and she called it "fritzing," which is lying. Don't ever fritz. And if she thought you were, she'd call you on it. She goes, "Are you fritzing to me?" You didn't dare do that. And I don't dare do that with the public. I don't block. To say that we're aggressively trying to identify and apprehend illegal immigrants is just not happening, because we don't have the resources, and we don't have the authority. And we can sit here and talk about some of the federal programs, like 287G. I've looked at it. We've attempted to get involved. They want some of our people, but there's no guarantee that we're gonna work here in Johnson County. I'm gonna give you two real-life stories, and then I'm gonna bring this into perspective for you, the challenge that we have. Remember, we brought this up in DC as well, and I'm gonna share with you a comment made by the head of ICE, who spoke to the sheriffs and chiefs that day. So, two live stories. We have today in custody, at the Johnson County Jail, approximately 48 foreign-born inmates. By foreign-born, I simply mean they weren't born in the United States of America. Doesn't mean they're not a citizen. Of those 40-plus, in fact, I got an email just a minute ago, we know that 42 of that number are illegal. They either have false ID, we know for a fact that they're here illegally. We have ICE agents in our jail every day, who come in and look at our booking sheets and determine citizenship on foreign-borns. And they range anywhere from England, Guatemala, Russia, Germany, Kenya, to, of course, the bigger, biggest population force is, somebody guess, Mexico. So when ICE puts a detainer on them, what that simply means is, ICE says, federal government says, "We want them, we'll take them back to Mexico, or wherever their country of origin is." We bring four into custody, and we're pretty aggressive with interdiction, which is stops that we're doing on interstate highways for drug interdiction. And we're pretty successful at it. And we seize their assets when we find them. And we don't care if they're Mexican nationals or US citizens, if they're carrying loads of dope, we're taking everything, plus, we're taking them to jail. And so, we had four major haulers from Mexico. The women were carrying about 200,000 apiece. They've got some new technology going on right now to get under the radar with that. But they were literally carrying 200 grand apiece on them, in cold, hard American cash. They'd already dumped a load of narcotics, which was substantial. Now, you're looking at almost half a million dollars here for two people. They go to jail, ICE is very responsive, and they say, you know, "We wanna take them." So we're gonna put a hold on them. They're gonna work with the state district attorney, whether it's county district attorney or with the AG. And on this particular group, they identified them as a criminal element, and that's their main interest. They wanna know they're bringing in narcotics to this country. And then, of course, they wanna know, they really like, we all would like to get inroads into cartel movement, cartel intelligence, you know, whatever. So these four people, two males, two females, are in our custody. We have a system set up in our jail, doesn't matter who you are, but within 12 hours, you have to have a medical assessment. "I don't want you to have a heart attack here. We don't want you to commit suicide here. We don't want you to come in here pregnant. We don't know about it. We're not doing the appropriate care treatment." Well, the two ladies were pregnant. We knew that within 12 hours. ICE is entitled to that data. Here's the medical sheet. They're illegal, but here's their medical status. So several months would go on, and they would work a deal saying, "We want these two to go back to Mexico." So they work with the state, and they say, "Okay, when you get done," and a lot of times, negotiations are done, attorney, you know, county attorney, that. And then, ICE will say, "Okay, those charges have been taken care of, so we're gonna take them and put them on the bus." The day came. We've been holding them for three months. You're paying for that. I'm gonna explain the SCAP program here real quick. Hi, Lyndy.
Hi.
How are you? Federal government does reimburse us partially. They pay about $65. Remember a little bit ago, I said it costs about 78 bucks a day? 104 total. Okay? We can all do the math. And that money comes back directly to the sheriff. Can only be used for jail necessities. It has to be pushed back into the system, the jail system. I can't use it to, you know, to buy computers with unless they go back to the jail, you know, those sorts of things. So, anyway, the day came for them to be deported. The ICE agent came in, signed for the two males, we put them in the appropriate jewelry, handcuffs, and put them on the bus. Finished the female's turn, and we do the same thing, and they sign for them, and we bring them out. Now, remember, I told you we had them six months? Okay? So we had them six months total. They came in, six months were pregnant, so things are noticeable now. The ICE agent pushed the paper back to us and said, "We won't take them." "No, you don't understand. You have a detainer. They're in federal custody. They're not in our custody. We're holding them for you. You've signed for them, you've gotta take them." He said, "No." And he left the building. So, obviously, that comes up to my level, and I was unaware of this. And I said, "Okay, stand by. Some dude here didn't wanna take the responsibility." So I called the SAC, which is the supervisory, supervisory agent in charge of Garden City ICE office, and said, "Hey, here's what we have." And I said, "You had an agent walk off." And I said, "You know, I, look, they're on your detainer." He goes, "We don't take them." "Now, wait a minute. No, you had a detainer on them for six months. So we don't take them if they're pregnant. We don't want the medical expenses, we don't want the liability." And they go to Springfield, Missouri, first, the way deportation to McAllen, Texas, for this region here. And I said, "So what am I to do as the sheriff? I have no charges. Those have been worked out. I only have one thing to do. Only one. You walk them to the front door, unlock it, and put them back out on the street of Olathe, Kansas. There's nothing else to be done. I don't have the authority to say, 'Well, we're gonna keep them here.'" "Oh, by the way, one of them had a high-risk pregnancy, and she spent about 30 days with her medical."
Oh, my God. Thank you, thank you.
You're done. Okay? That's what we're confronted with, and partnership is not there. The authority for local sheriffs and local police departments is not there. In fact, I read some historical data, some, a couple of the local chiefs of police here who said, "You know, until we get the authority, our plate's full, and we're just not going to do that." And that's what I'm saying, from the authority point. I don't make law. I enforce law. We can stand in front of them, as I did in DC, and go, "Look, you know, the public has had enough. We have got to, and if we don't do something, then locally, we'll start doing something." Arizona, 1070, does that ring a bell? Public's gonna say, "We're gonna do something." Federal government did what?
Sue.
Well, yeah, they did. They intervened and said, "No." And then, yesterday, I heard for the first time that Arizona said, "We're gonna sue the feds." And, "Oh, by the way, we're gonna use private money. We're not gonna use public money to do that." Think somebody's gonna write a check? I mean, seriously. Think somebody's gonna write a check, enough money, to defend themselves against the federal government? Yeah, maybe. But I think the maybes, you know, the reality of it is, they sue, we sue, it's your money that's buying the lawsuit. I think things can be settled a lot different if we take this serious, and we get these partnerships started, and we stop this flood at the border. And I'm back with the technology again. They can build fences, they can build the walls, they can build, and they can build. But until we, until we exercise the appropriate technology, we had another homicide suspect in Shawnee, Kansas, not the recent one, here last year. We got him just trying to cross the border into Mexico with a drunk. INS has got drunks, and the guy was running it out of Austin, Texas, and we were catching him coming across the border, just on the other side of McAllen. So it's there. It costs money to do justice. But the partnership's not there, because I would submit to you, as a local sheriff, and what I heard in DC from the head of ICE is, "We're not interested." The question was, "How many agents do you have down there?" We are only focusing on the criminal illegal. See how that's gonna narrow the scope? The criminally illegal, if they're coming in with narcotics and involved in the narcotics trades, that's where we're spending our resources. Do you see what happens here when you do that? How many did I tell you I was holding this morning? 42. How many did we talk about earlier that are in this state that we know of? Think we're doing a good job? No, the answer's no. Don't fritz. The answer's no. Do you feel like you've got your hands tied? Coming from me, the answer's yes. We're not taking it serious. We're just not taking it serious. And there's no way to push them off dead center, it seems, it seems. But locally, you're starting to see more of what you are seeing in some of those border states. There's some real critical issues that we have to confront. Trust me on this one. They're really critical issues. And the only way we're gonna get them identified is, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to initiate a couple of, some technology here. We're not gonna do this, you know, we tried this in the 1950s. Let me make sure I got this date right. President Eisenhower was president of the United States. President Eisenhower said, "We have an immigration issue that's really coming cumbersome upon the United States of America." Two fifty's, alright? He did an operation, you can look this up, you can Google it. These are his words on a federal document. These are not my words. I'm being very politically correct here when I name this document. It's called Operation Web App. And that attempt was to remove those illegals from this country. It didn't work then, in the 50s. And here it is, 2011, and it still ain't working. Let's be honest here. It's not working. What I saw in 1977 in Garden City, Kansas, I talked to the Ford County Sheriff here just a couple of weeks ago, and the population in Ford County, which is Dodge City, Kansas, 66%. 66%. Two bills in the House regarding, so far, anyway, two bills in the House on immigration. One is House Bill 2026, which is E-Verify, and it's still in committee as of January 19th. It was in committee and it's still there, which means it hasn't been worked, it's not coming out yet. And House Bill 2006, it's in House, state, and that's the state tuition issue. Landed in committee on January 10th, and it's still there. Those are the only two immigration, as far as Kansas, that's being opened right now. And I can go on and on. And I think I've covered most of the issues here. One issue that I do wanna cover is a couple of other brick-and-mortar issues. We've been rather aggressive since so far to play some catch-up here. On the remodel downtown as an intake and assessment center for our jails, I explained to you the second chance reentry program. That's gonna be very important. I think we really have a chance here at controlling our jail populations and still making a difference, and keeping this county, as we have it today, safe. We're not going to give up on that part of it. The other thing is, the new communication center has been a real huge success dispatching. That's going to catch some legislators' eyes in the next couple of years, based on the cost of those centers, and how many do we need in Kansas, and how many do you need in each county, and those sort of things. And then, the last thing, which is my flagship, which is very critically important to me, is a forensic crime lab. We received international accreditation last year, the only lab in the state of Kansas, and several states around, to receive that accreditation. It's become so critically imperative of good criminal cases, when we got into the crime lab business back in the 70s, it was probably one of the smarter things that a sheriff could've done. There are several sheriff's labs throughout the state, and ours with the international accreditation, I would have to tell you, ranks up there in the top five. Because there's a lot of things going on with crime labs, we're coming under a lot of pressure with how we're doing business, and the protocols on quality assurance, and some very bad things that have happened at federal labs. And in fact, we're helping Houston, Texas, right now, with their lab, straightening out some issues there that, quite frankly, there were some rogue chemists involved in several of these labs. I'm not pointing at Houston. I'm just saying, they're paying for us to come down there to straighten out some of their issues. So, this lab has an immense amount of credibility, and it has an immense amount of credibility with the district attorney's office and with the local courts. And in fact, we've gotten that national recognition, and now, even the international recognition. And in fact, we've gotten that national recognition, and now even the international recognition. We've done a very, very good job in the forensic field and continue to do that. And that's, that tomorrow is here today. I'm here to tell you that that investment will pay dividends for what is going on in this county to combat crime. And, you know, the juries have been sensitized to CSI. You know, "Well, you know, I saw that on TV. Why aren't you doing that?" Well, we're not only doing that, we're doing a lot more. The only thing we haven't managed to do yet is put DNA on this side of the computer and have it print out a suspect on this side. That's the only thing we haven't been able to do just yet. But we're close to doing that. So I guess with time left, I would just yield the floor to you. And if there are any questions from either one of us, we'll take them.